Good evening all, welcome to this Harlan Community School District Board of Education meeting. We actually have three meetings tonight, a hearing, a board meeting, and a closed meeting, so fasten your seatbelts. I see, we've got a quorum with everybody here, Catherine, so if you want to mark that down, we can call the meeting to order. And we've got the quorum, the first thing is to do here is to approve the agenda for the, for the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Jade has moved, and we've got Joe seconding. Any comment on the school calendar for 2022 to 23? Do I make it out there?
Yeah.
Okay. I have an issue I would like to address and possibly change. At this time, we have PD on every, is it every other Wednesday in the afternoon? I'd like to supposedly adjust that to the morning. It would have less effect on our students. Either way, it's going to propose issues for parents to, with students getting in and out of school. It'll have less impact with extracurricular activities. If our kids are leaving at 1:15, especially in example, middle school students leave at 1:15 because we're having an early out due to the professional development, getting them back for whatever their extracurricular endeavors are could be a little bit challenging for parents as well as the kids showing up.
Sure.
Has this been brought to the teachers during the?
Might kind of be where I start the line, my path.
We did, yes. It was shared with the teacher union when we very first started with negotiations, we shared it.
Oh, okay.
And then this has been sent out to teachers, I don't know, probably.
We're talking to different things.
Oh, are you talking to the calendar?
She's talking about they've seen that. Have I?
I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, I was just, I was just asking that for professional development, we've already had it in the afternoons, and if we change it to the morning, I just wanted to know if that's been.
In the past, it's always been full days, right?
We've done full days and not very many early outs, I'm looking for, I think the one concern would be transportation. Jared, would it matter to start later or end earlier?
Either or, we'd be fine.
What do the principals prefer?
The principals, and you guys speak out, but the principals were the ones that, if you look at professional development, the best way to do professional development is in smaller chunks, so two to four hours at a time, and on a more regular basis, like every couple of weeks, which is what we tried to do, versus an entire day and then not talk about that for another month or two. So that's, that was the goal, but I don't know that it matters morning or afternoon, that's.
Well, the only thing in the afternoon is if you, a lot of times we go from 1:30 to, or 1:30 to 3:00, we allow the coaches to go at 3:00, but there are some groups that stay at work in their departments or in their content area from 3:00 to 4:30 or 3:00 to 4:00, I mean, they get a little extra time to work in their teams. As to where if you have in the morning, you have to stop at 10 o'clock, then they have to go to class and they can't continue that professional conversation. But I mean, that's the only thing that I can say that would be a big difference there is we get a little bit more on the backside for teachers that are not coaching that can stay and have those conversations, but that's, that's just what I see on my end.
Bill or Joe?
I think transportation, especially at the middle school level, is difficult because high school kids can drive, so when they're trying to get to rehearsals or practices of any sort, they kind of are able to do that on their own. So when we look at having early outs, then, you know, for middle school, on those days we just have not practiced, you know, which is not the best, and, you know, for some people to get back is very burdensome. On the other end of the spectrum, sometimes we, if we do move it to the morning, another thing to consider is, again, transportation, we have a lot of students that get dropped off by parents in the morning. So if we have a school, let's say that starts at 10 o'clock on those days, are we still, I mean, we have kids that are showing up at 7:15 in the morning because their parents work in Omaha or somewhere, so they get dropped off, well, will they still continue to get dropped off at 7:15, 7:30, and even 8 o'clock, but then we're not starting school until 10:00? Well, something we'd have to think about then would be how we're providing supervision for those kids. So on both ends of the spectrum there, whether it's before or after school, transportation is a, is something we need to keep in mind when it comes to middle school kids for sure.
And we could look at giving a para, some extra hours and providing supervision if we needed to, or I don't know, I mean, we'd have to look at that at all at elementary level too, probably, Jeff, or what?
The only thing I can think of is breakfast, I mean, we have over 100 kids eat breakfast every morning that they would possibly miss out on.
Oh.
Well, if we had PD in the morning, they'd miss out on their breakfasts. That's the only thing that can, I mean, other than that, I don't know if it's a big difference.
I'm glad you brought it up, break. How about, it is a public hearing, if anyone wants to weigh in, now's a good time.
So it looks like there are one, two, three, four, five, six, eight of them, correct? One a month, down at the bottom.
I don't really, I mean, I don't know if I have a preference, but I, I guess I would just, yeah, would want to know where the principals and the staff are coming from, what works best for their, in their buildings or?
We've never done a late start, so I can't even speak to how it would be.
Like for weather?
I mean, for PD, so I mean, I haven't been part of it. So it might be great, I don't know.
I never would have thought of it. Good job.
Yeah, one, I'm not that original, I didn't think of it.
Understood.
Yeah, one thing to know is that if we do change this, we'll have, we'll lead to in May, correct it, and then have another hearing, and so, just so, so we know that if we do change it, we'll have to.
I do think my biggest concern would be the nutrition side of it. Those kids, if we're two hours late, the food service can't serve breakfast and then serve lunch an hour, two hours later. So it's a really good point.
One a year.
Got it early.
So that's something that we can table and look into what, maybe what the teachers or what works best as collectively?
Yeah, we can problem solve and see, and maybe there are ways we could hire a couple paras and provide some type of breakfast for those kids and some type of supervision, we'd have to figure that out.
Is there any detrimental face not to have a calendar till May, or?
The only thing is, I think in Power School, when we're doing all of our trick, our scheduling, they need, we need the calendar, but if, if we could make a motion to keep the days the same and only change that decision if possible, then that would be okay, because all the days would stay the same, it would just be shifting the morning or the afternoon, because I do think they have to put some, for some reason, we have to have this all built in Power School before we can build our other days.
And we moved conferences off of Halloween, right?
Yes. We didn't consider that.
That wasn't me, that was someone.
Someone caught that.
You'll see it there in November, Jade.
Yeah, I'm looking at it right now, okay.
So would you like to help me with that motion, would we put that motion out?
Will you explain the snow days first?
Oh, yeah.
Sorry, I've noticed that, but I don't see it built on there, so I was curious how that went.
So the snow days are exactly the same, it's just written differently, and I, so the last student day is April 19th, and then the snow and state days would be that whole week after. So if we had, like this year, makeup, so we had two snow days and a state football day, so those three, so if this were this year's calendar, then we would not end until the 24th. So it's, it's just, it's the exact same, but it's written the other way, because on the calendar now, it would say the last day is on the 26th, but really, you count backwards because it's only on the 24th. Does that, it's the exact same, I know it's confusing either way that we word it, but I think what I will try to do next year is if we have a snow day or a state day, when I send my message, just say, okay, now the last day of school will be May 23rd, if that's, if that would be helpful.
That was my only question.
It's built, they are built in, yeah. The kicker behind the calendar is it's a giant puzzle, because the teachers have to have 190 days for their calendars, the kids have to have 1,080 hours, which is different than the 190 days, and you cannot start school before August 23rd based on legislation because of the state fair, and you have to cram all those days in because you really, teachers have told us, and rightfully so, they would really not like to have to come back after Labor Day.
Memorial Day.
Or Memorial Day, I'm sorry, I said, oh, yeah. So you try to, I mean, you hope you don't use those five snow days, but, so it's a little bit of a.
Professional development is in there.
Yeah, and they, you have to have so many hours of professional development legally, so, yeah.
So we sat down and talked today, and it's darn near impossible to move puzzle pieces, it's really tight.
Monty.
So you're, I'll go ahead.
Well, years ago, we had, the last day of the school was the last day of school, no matter if we had, it was never ever going to go beyond that. Remember if we had less snow days, that last day of school was being moved up, but we never ever moved it back. What, when did this change?
It's not, it's the exact same, but what we would do on, it'd be just, if we did it that way, then that last day on the 19th there would be the 26th, and you'd just move back.
The 26th, okay.
It's the same, same concept.
So, okay, it's just like you said, flip-flop.
Instead of going backwards, you add them on to the end versus taking them off?
Okay, I think the reason that they did that years ago was so that people could plan vacations.
Sure.
And they knew that May 26th was the drop, drop dead, last day of school. And if we didn't use the snoo, if we didn't use the snow days, then that last day would be brought up by how many days?
And, and we can, I mean, it's the same word, if people understand the other wording, we can definitely put that wording back in there if that's easier, and then change that 26th, it's the same.
Yeah, I just think that that drop dead was the reason it got switched, because we got into vacations and then we had this big.
And I think too, especially with the hours, like the 1,080 hours that kids have to have, we, we go over our 1,080 hours, which is a good thing because kids are getting good education. So before that, you had to go 178 days, which is not the same as a 1,080 hours, so when districts chose to do hours, depending on how long your day is, I mean, your day is 15 minutes longer than somebody else's, that all adds up to however many hours. So that's one of the reasons why districts used to do it that way, whereas, I mean, we would be totally at our 1,080 hours if needed, so we can say that's a drop dead day too, either way.
It just gets to be a little bit uncomfortable if you would have a crazy scenario, like three blizzards in a row that knock out 15 days of school or something, what do you do if you guaranteed a drop dead day? It's, I wondered about that at the time, I remember thinking, well, nothing really happens that causes us to not be able to have school. Find other ways around it.
Well, in some districts have even added a half an hour a day, a half an hour to each day for the last, you know, so that's what makes the hours more flexible, which is easier to pick that up.
Just so the community knows, like, okay, do not plan any trips from the last day of school, because that's what happened.
Yeah.
So what you're looking for is a motion to be crafted that would say, we're accepting this calendar with the exception of those professional development days that may switch from afternoon to morning, but the, so that would be the motion, and then the, the understanding is that we would still have to in May have a public hearing and approve a final calendar, this wouldn't be, this would be for the people that have to have a calendar, we're guaranteeing them that everything except those days is standard, would that be the motion? And even those days are going to be as they are, it's just whether the development. So if that's, that's the motion you're looking for, I would, I would make that motion. Okay. How's that sound, Catherine?
I'll make it.
Got it.
Accept the calendar, except for.
I don't have to repeat it.
Professional. Development days.
Great.
I just would want to.
Thank you, I did not hear you.
Yeah, great, didn't.
I can't speak so softly.
But I would, would want something in there about the fact that the understanding is that we still will have to approve a final calendar in the May.
Did I hear that you seconded it? Great. Yes, you did, sir. Very good, thank you. Okay, are all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? Okay, motion carried, and so we can now have a motion for adjournment of the public hearing portion of our meeting.
Hi, Joanie.
Thank you, Joanie, she moves. We adjourn, and a second on that is out. Okay. Hey, we're moving along, one meeting done.
Second meeting, board meeting here, April 20th, and we'll call this meeting to order
and determine if we do have a quorum, we know it's a public forum. And so, let's see, the first item here is to approve the agenda, so is there any discussion on the agenda for this evening? I think so, would be a good idea. Yes, it is, it is a public forum, and citizens wishing to address the board must notify the board secretary no later than two hours prior to the meeting, and so were there any?
Yes, Michelle would like to speak.
I would like to.
Thank you, very good, I appreciate that.
I'm here today to plead my case for the early retirement package, and remember when the application was due, my attention, my intentions were to teach through 2023. However, after careful consideration, I made the decision to retire, a decision that does not come lightly and has weighed heavily on me for some time. You see, life changes quickly. In November, I had not given any thought to retiring a year early. I love teaching and being a teacher, I love my students and my fellow teachers, I love the school that I teach in and the district that I represent, but as I said, life changes quickly. In October, I lost my father-in-law, was busy dedicating my free time to support my husband and mother-in-law. We fell into a new routine and as we began to settle, into the later stages of the grieving process, I lost my own mother. The death of two parents coupled with my own ongoing health struggles has led to this decision. As you may know, I have taught as a substitute teacher and then as a full-time teacher for 32 years in Harlan, at Harlan Community. I've served on numerous boards and committees during my time here. I was an original member of the TLC Committee that wrote the first grant. I've been a lead team member, served on the TQM and Calendar Committee, as well as various fundraising committees. I was HEA president for five years and served on the Negotiations Committee. There were five early retirement packages this year, and four of them were utilized. I understand that this package was to be signed by November 30th, however, I'm requesting that you please take into consideration my circumstances and grant an exception. I've left my time serving at Harlan Community School District. Harlan rivals the best schools in the state in many areas, and I'm proud to have been a part of the school's legacy for the past 32 years. Faced with the decision to step down for such an honorable position here in our school district has been difficult, which is why I'm coming to you at this time rather than sooner. I'm hopeful that this board will be understanding of my circumstances. In that package, item nine of the plan, is the right to waive requirements or conditions, states, the board reserves the right to waive any requirement or condition of this plan at its discretion and at any time. Any decision by the board to waive a requirement or condition which is a part of this plan should not establish any precedent with regard to any other request for a waiver. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you.
And I have, I sign this with hopes that you guys could make a decision, so.
Yes, so we really appreciate your petition and coming to us, and we really thank you for your service, and part of the law is that we can't take any action this evening, and I'm sure it'll be taken up by the administration and further discussed, appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
How about approving the agenda? Does anybody want to have any discussion about?
I'm moved to approve the agenda.
Thank you.
Second. Yes, maybe, would you want to take that up, Al, as far as the agenda?
Well, if you look down on letter and item number five.
E5.
And E, professional services agreement with De novo, there's a couple items that we are still working on the terminology on, so I think that's going to be, it would be good for us to table that particular one, just to get the wording exactly right.
And do you know which part of that you're working on? Any idea?
Well, I, I don't know, I, maybe Jim can speak to that too, but it's some of the wording then, where the responsibility lies if certain things happen. Would that be a quick way to say that?
Yes.
I think I know.
Brian was working with them, and Brian isn't able to come tonight, so I feel like we should table that until Brian can be part of that discussion.
Make sure we get this one right, because it's dealing with the public money.
So, just sort of, pretty much, agenda without.
Without E5.
So do you need another motion to approve the agenda then, with that?
Should I redo it?
Yeah.
I make a motion to approve the agenda less five E.
Second. Very good, did you get that, Catherine?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, very good, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
And those opposed, nay? Very good, next we have the discussion items, and we'll turn it over to Superintendent Barnett.
Okay, well, Catherine's got the super recognition, and start with Scott, we have visitors, do you want to start with you?
Yeah, I'll start with the, our jazz band, our, at the Iowa Jazz Band Championship, we were state runner-ups, which, it's bigger than that, I mean, last year out of 19 performers on the stage, 10 of them graduated, so they look at the turnover there, and last year in the spring conversations about what this is going to look like, there was, the word was, it was going to be a rebuilding year, and I don't know how much of a rebuilding year it was, but congratulations to the students, the parents, and the instructors, because they have worked a ton of hours and worked very, very hard. And at the Iowa Jazz Championship, we had two outstanding performers, which would be Emma Hersberg and Ian Carney, they were selected as the outstanding performers that day, and we have five students that are going to play on the Iowa State Jazz Band, I don't know if it's on.
Allstate.
Allstate, and they're going to spend a couple days performing, they're going to go down and practice, spend the night, and then perform the next day, which is a huge honor to have five students selected for that, so congratulations to our jazz band, and what a great year. Stay runner-up.
Stay runner-up.
I think the word is, we were hoping to get in the top 10 last year, and then we ended up state runner-up, so that was, it's by far exceeded our expectations, so a lot of hard work and time.
The event that was held at that auditorium was amazing, that was, I wouldn't have thought that I could have sat that long and, and really not felt like I was wanting to get home, but it was, the whole night was very enjoyable and just a lot of wow to it, so you guys are great.
And Ian and Emma both received a plaque from the Iowa Jazz Championship, just outstanding performers, I'm probably going to have to bring those, but they were, it was a nice plaque that they received also individually.
Thank you guys for coming, and you don't have to sit here through the rest of the morning meeting unless you would like to, you're welcome if you'd like, but we just wanted to recognize you, we appreciate your hard work, and know that it's not easy, you put lots of hours into this.
A lot.
Yes, yes, so, thank you.
I see that, well, I mean, look at Joe's proud dad t-shirt. What instrument do you play, Ian?
I'm a drummer.
Okay, okay.
That's great, congratulations.
Also sax, you got her shirt.
Yeah, that's how I knew. Plus, in the picture she's wearing, she's playing in the picture, so that, yeah.
I'll thank later.
Congratulations.
Yeah, great job. We had some OSA students that also spent the weekend, it was a Sunday through Tuesday, I believe, at the Leadership Conference, that would be Allison Owens, Violet Loonstein, Grace Keenan, and Megan Klein. OSA stands for Health Occupation Students of America, so they had a great opportunity to go down and work on some leadership and pursue some things in the OSA field.
And all four of them qualified to compete in the International Leadership Conference in Nashville in June.
All right, middle school, Bill, what you got?
Yeah, there's a group of students up there, there's three different teams, a sixth grade team, and then there's a seventh and eighth grade, two different teams up there for a program called Battle of the Books. It's a group of students that just likes to indulge in reading, and Mrs. Nira Sondag, our seventh grade language arts teacher oversees this, so she gets together a group of kids, and there's 13 total books that they divide up and read together, and then they go to a contest, which was held today, where they, it's trivia questions about everything that happened in the book, so some kids have to read three books or four books, some kids start reading even more than that, but then they get to answer those questions as a team, and there was about 12 or 13 different schools, all there participating, some schools such as ours, we had more than one team, so there was about 25 teams or so participating, and our eighth grade team, that titled themselves Overbooked, they won, so.
Awesome, good.
Yeah, so it was really kind of neat to see them, you know, find another way to participate in an activity that they like to do, which is reading, and so they had some good time reading books together, and then going and participating in that event today down at Underwood.
Yeah.
Want any pictures, no?
Is that my fault?
Jeff, do you have pictures?
We want pictures next time.
I got it right here. So our citizens of the week since we met last are a fifth grader Connor Bruck, a new student to our, our school, but has been a great citizen, a fourth grader Blakely Fatka, and then kind of a special recognition, so the Mothers Association, Shelby County Mothers, I used to call it the Mothers Club, I don't know if it's still called the Mothers Club. Shelby County Mothers Association select, they have a writing contest every year, and they have to write about what their mother means to them, and Charlotte Pattee was the winner this year, so she'll be going on to the state level. So we had Davis and Mrs. Pattee come over and made her cry. So she would read, so that was really well done, so we had a lot of participation in that, so.
We have Mike Dare and Jared Klein here tonight, and they are, did I get them open?
Click, so click there, and then the Jared at the top, yep, yep.
So Jared and Mike, if you guys want to come up, I don't know if you want to talk a little bit about, when I first came on board, one of the things that the board had asked is if we could bring in kind of some of the guys behind the scenes, and there's, they do a lot of work, and Jared does way more on the transportation side and fixes things, he's even fixed my car. And Mike does a ton too, and they're, I mean, Jared's been here for quite a while and worked his way up, and next year we're actually going to share him with AHSTW and change his title to Director of Transportation, and Mike is our Director of Maintenance, and he has come in and just looked at things and has really helped us figure out how to fix things, what needs to be fixed, who to call, and so I'm going to let them talk to you a little bit more, but they're, they both. call and, so I'm gonna let them talk to you a little bit more, but they're, they're both God-sents to us, so it looks like Mike, you're first.
Yeah, I'm not much of a talker.
That's not what I wanted, I'm sorry.
Man it back.
Yes, here's a slideshow here, daily maintenance on all buildings, I take care of three kitchen maintenance, there's twenty-two air handler units, four boilers, seven commercial water heaters, two chillers, one cooling tower, all the chemical pumps, the groundskeeping and there's a, there's a bunch more. That was just a little list I had. Coordinate all subcontractors within the district setting, obtain bids needed for maintenance jobs and new equipment. I'm on call all the time. Overseal all custodial staff with Brian as well, I order all the materials, all the supplies and everything. Yeah, it's, it's been a rough year for me, but I'm getting the hang of it, I think, a lot to learn still though, every day is a, a new challenge, so, but it's going good.
And poor Mike is now with fifteen hundred little bodies and big bodies with lots of germs, so those of us who've been in education are like, got really good immune systems, but Mike's is getting better. Poor guy, he's like, oh my god.
One of the chemical pumps used, what's their?
For the chiller or the cooling tower and then our boilers, they all take chemicals, expensive chemicals as well, yeah.
Brian has made the comment that there's some things that need to get, get on schedule is what he says.
Yes, there is.
Is there anything that you could address?
Our roofs need to get on the schedule for sure, but hopefully this, what we're doing in the future helps that out, so there is, there's a lot of, there's some HVAC stuff that needs updated, but that's all on the list too, so we're gaining, I think. We're going the right direction, let's put it that way. Any other questions for me?
Are you situated for custodial staff?
What's that now?
Do you have enough staff on?
No.
That's what I figured.
No, but we're, we're dealing, I guess, we have, I think there's nine or is there eleven? I'm not sure.
There's two.
High school.
Two at the elementary, two at the middle.
I have four at the high school.
And four at the high school, so nine probably.
Nine, yeah.
We do have some retirements coming, so they'll be hiring for them.
The maintenance part is, I mean, I'm busy, let's put it that way, I'll stop, phones are always ringing.
So maintaining is part of it, the other part is probably fixing it when it breaks down, right?
Yeah.
Part of that also, right?
Yep. And trying to get help right now from, you know, just contractors, it's, it's really tough, everybody is busy.
Is your big goal mechanical equipment then?
Yeah, a lot of bearings, a lot of just, I mean, right now I'm working on the cooling tower, it's, it needs a lot of attention, so it's, it's up and running right now, so we're good for tomorrow. We'll have cooling.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
Jared?
All right, well Jared, I'm now at the transportation bus barn, I'm there I think eight, I think I'm on eight or nine years, I think. Hire and supervise all drivers, right now I have thirty to thirty-two drivers, full-time substitutes, that's including car, van and I think we just hired like three or four here, maybe even five the past month, which is awesome. So, I think we're sitting pretty good for drivers, unfortunately, like other districts and schools from what I'm hearing anyway. Plan and organize all bus routes before and after school, I'll go through all the routes in the summer, give the drivers the locations, the family names, if they have any new stops out in the country and then just mow it down with them and then they kinda make it how they want, run it how they want, which is the most efficient. And then to that I have thirteen regular daily bus routes and currently three car routes to Omaha and one to Manning. Plan and organize all activity in arts, transportation to events, so line up drivers to activities, whether it be sports or any other events, and then find a substitute to fill in for them to drive the route for the day, pretty much every day, or send substitutes to the activities. Complete routine maintenance on all vehicles and buses, I have twenty-one buses, eleven cars, vans, Suburbans. Routine maintenance would include oil changes, fuel filters, tires, there's always lights, mirrors, seat repairs, fixing leads, leaks, whatever needs to fix mechanically. Determine when to ask others to assist in vehicle maintenance, if I need a second pair of hands in the shop, it's just me by myself, so that happens quite often, or it would just be running vehicles around, swapping or just to ride here and there. Next year, Director for sharing with AHST, it's kind of gonna be similar to what I do here, routine maintenance and, yeah, looking forward to that, I guess. Should be good.
He was involved in that decision, he let him know.
Obtain bids for new vehicles and buses, it's fuel and bus bids, we send out two to three fuel bids to local co-ops and vehicle bus bids, I'll meet with Brian up here, we'll go over the budget, see what we have and usually we try to get a new bus every year and then a van or a car if we have enough left, but right now we're sitting really good with, with those too. The past couple of years we had the opportunity to get a grant for a few other buses, so used, but they're pretty well new, so we're sitting pretty good, pretty good.
It's good to hear, because it wasn't that long ago, we weren't sitting maybe quite as good on buses, but also more to the fact of having issues keeping, and we're getting bus drivers, right?
Yes, yeah.
Good to hear that we were in good shape.
Kinda tough to start the year, but it came around for sure, absolutely, yeah.
And is it right that the Vocas are going to bring their buses up here?
Yes, yep, they'll bring everything up here and just routine maintenance, oil changes, a lot of trouble I think they're having if they have a simple engine light on or something, just bring it over, plug it in, diagnose it, hey, you can run it for a week, I'll order the parts, you'll be just fine, or park it and wait for the parts, just, they just wanna know that kind of knowledge or, 'cause they don't have a, well, they do have a bus barn-ish, I guess, yeah, yeah.
So they're actually out there.
Not theirs, no, no, they actually park theirs on the baldime parking lot in the Vocas, so, yeah, yeah. Or put Ed's, they're kind of their guy that looks over that, he'll do all the little stuff, but bring whatever he can to me, yeah.
Thank you.
Great, good job.
Thank you guys.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Good guys, have a good evening.
Yep, you too.
I have a lot of, I will.
A lot of accident free miles.
Okay, Superintendent report, it is Board Recognition Month, so we have some treats for you guys and the kids made cards and a little gift for you, so thank you all for serving and.
Did you get yours?
Pet purse.
Big.
Thank you.
Yeah, you get a big, you get a big paycheck for it too. I didn't get to work it.
Do you remember, I don't know who made others, but I.
Our Friends of Rachel Club, so the Rachels Challenge and the Kindness Clubs, they've been starting to do things, so they helped make cards.
Thank you.
So, thank you all. And Jim, do you want to talk?
Friends of Rachel.
Friends of Rachel Club.
F O R, Friends of Rachel, yeah.
I was curious.
Yeah, sorry.
It was Tommy, Greg, it was Tommy.
H C H S.
It works.
Yes, so we have two different groups.
So, Tommy majors the work that I do, you want Tommy, he was here the other night.
Yeah.
So excited about it, so we thought we'd make sure we.
Make sure, yeah, good, good.
If you all remember, a few weeks ago, Lou Ann Gist with the Iowa Association School Boards came up and I had to kind of sweep the cobwebs out and remember what we talked about, but just briefly, what we went over is this idea that the board conducts their policymaking role and it's probably things we all knew and some of the old timers know better, but it's good to be reminded of those things. This idea of balcony level management or look is, was one of the points about it and second then the superintendent oversees the day-to-day management and so that's the first paragraph here under Discussion Highlights. The second one is we discussed how to handle concerns and complaints from the community and to use our chain of command policy to encourage people to see the right people. And the last thing we talked about was the superintendent evaluation process, which we get to do today, not very lucky. And so then on the second page, there is some facilitator recommendations and they pretty much fall in line with that first page as far as mainly following the chain of command policy and occasionally having problem-solving conversations and then several bullet points here about considering long-term goals of the school district. So, wanted to just mention, she asked that we mention that and kind of redo it once again, what we, what we learned, so we appreciate her coming.
We have four guests that I want to, so Troy, Shayman, I'll let you take over.
We stand here?
Yeah.
I have to use my hand. So first of all, Shaylee can join us if you want to. Appreciative to the board and administration for letting us come out tonight and kind of present our very ambitious fundraising effort from the Harlan Little League that will be kicking off here shortly, so we appreciate that greatly. I want to introduce myself real quick, Troy Shayman, plant controller at the Monogram Plants here in Harlan Denison, kind of involved in this project because of the Monogram Loves Kids Foundation, we'll bring that up here a little bit. I got Tim Miller, who's our park superintendent here, Shayla Line, who's a teacher, parent involved in here. So, real quick, I want to run through our quick names of our board member, our facility or our fundraising committee, so I don't forget. I got Dane Testers, Mary Peterson, I got Todd Barrett, I got Tricia Spangenberg, we got Heath Stein, and we got Shayla Line and we got Roger Kankel, Kay Goshore, Tim and myself. So, there's ten of us that are ambitious about this project we got. So, the theme of our fundraising is Summer Nights and Ballpark Lights.
Catchy.
Someone at work gave up, not me by the way.
She had to say thank you.
Oh, thank you for the compliment, so I'll give a shout out to the person who came up with that, so a couple of girls at work came up with that, no idea. So, here's, here's, so the background of the story is a little bit of, through the generosity of our shareholders at Monogram, our Monogram company refinanced, our company recapitalized it last fall and through that process, our CEO was able to get our shareholders to contribute to an endowment fund, that was a very large endowment fund. So, what that endowment fund has given us the opportunity is, is this once-in-a-lifetime project of going out into the communities and where our plants are located and having a large sum of money that goes towards a project. If you go to a project that started, hasn't started, or one that might get over the finish line, so out of that, we're fortunate enough to get two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to go to a project, is what the amount of funds we got. So, based upon conversations within the community, within our team at Monogram, we came up with the Ballpark Lights at J.J. Jensen Park. So, part of that is, it'd be all five fields at the lower level, you have the three little league fields, we call them little league, but that's the three little ones, high school softball. The field that is excluded is, most of us call it Field Four, or it's the field up on the hill. So, we did this, it's been on what we want to call, also city council members, so it's been on our wish list of one of those projects, but it comes with a hefty price tag of a million dollars and change, so it's kind of been on our wish list and we kind of were thinking power protection is more important per se than lighting, right? So, with this pro, with this money that came to us, we thought the community would be a great project, very ambitious to help raise money with our generous people within our community. So, obviously we came up with the lights. So, what it is, it's Musco LED lighting, galvanized steel poles and LED lighting is what comes with, so that we replace all the lighting down there and we kind of ambitiously, it'd be great if we could do everything at one time, but we also were trying to think of, well strategically, we call it phase one, phase two, so like the three little fields, rough cost, about seven-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, then you got about a hundred-and-five-twenty, five-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars to do the high school softball baseball field. So, we kind of laid it out in a phase one, phase two. Mainly we, what that structure is, based upon the quantity of kids and games that are occurring in those three fields, is much larger than say the high school field. So, we wanted to have, thanks for the opportunity, as we came out to speak to it, obviously it impacts our youth here dramatically and we, we're kind of going about, we're kicking off our fundraising efforts, going to the different boards, stuff like that and kind of using this public forum to help spread the word for us and we'll be, we'll be seeing more information coming up shortly, article in the paper per se, supervisor's meeting, got, we did the city council meeting last night, so we apologize to Greg, who has to listen to it twice.
Last night's was more exciting.
We're just trying to get to the good stuff. So, part of this will be, we've got a little quick facts we want to kind of share with the community that may not, potentially may be surprising to some per se. One of the really cool, interesting facts from a tourism area in our community is twenty-thousand people plus utilize the facility down there throughout the year. We do over two-hundred-and-fifty-plus ballgames on all the five fields down there or throughout the year. We got six-hundred-plus kids out for softball, baseball and all ages combined and then we utilize the facility from March to August, or from October, sorry. So, facility's on a lot, or used a lot, sorry, lights are on a lot, so we think this is a great fundraiser. So, by the time we net out the Monogram Loves Kids two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars and the project of a one-point-two-five, we're looking to raise a million dollars. Obviously, we're seeking a lot of grants and also in our great community, I love the phrase is join as one to get the job done, so, you know, we will rely on the generosity of our patrons in our community, so we appreciate that upfront as we come out and we have, as everybody knows, we got a lot of great projects going on in our community. I know you guys are discussing improvements here at the school, you know, you got the initial conversations, subcommittees kind of meeting, we got the Dream Playground in Harland's, another project that's kind of starting to save their grown legs and getting that conversation started. So, what we really liked about this technology, there's a couple pieces we really like, we expect to lower our utilities fifty to eighty-five percent, so there's potential savings, we're gonna talk about that a little bit. Tim loves the idea that low emission or low glare.
Low light pollution, so all the lights will be down, there won't be any light pollution going up and also be contained in the fields more than spread out. You know, down there it's all right if, if we light everything up, because there aren't any houses around and that, but it's real important that that light is right on the fields and we're not wasting light going up and that, so that's, that's my big thing.
So, a couple of the reasons is also, our quick research says the light, wooden light poles were probably put in the seventies, so they are approaching fifty years old, half a century, for those that want to claim they're that old, right, or that young. We believe the light fiction, the light bulbs themselves were put in the mid-nineties was the last time they've been updated, so we kind of have those little facts, something like that. Another part we liked is obviously, talk about warranty, comes with the twenty-five-year warranty and those that watch the Little Central Football game realize, there's remote app, these lights are on, off, they're LED, you turn them off, there's no warm-up, you turn them off and on.
You have to be more specific, the Little Central Dome game.
Yeah, Dome game, sorry. We shut the lights out in a different fashion.
Now this presentation matters better now.
You just, you just beat last.
Yeah, I'm going, going.
See, they'd be similar to Merrill Field with an app that, that whoever has the app can turn them on and off as well as turn them on and off at each of the poles, but also we can schedule them to where they get shut off at eleven o'clock. There are some times where people forget to shut off the lights as they leave and they have lights on all night, or you get that phone call at two in the morning saying, hey, your lights are on. So, I'll go turn them on.
Yeah, so he can do it from home instead of driving down. So, the other part we want to kind of also share, not only as the Little League per se, but also as a community is, we want to call this like the phase three at J.J. Jensen Park, right? So, those that remember, about four to five years ago, the city did large improvements down there, we did the new press boxes, backstops, fencing, I think we finished the black fencing on the little, little fields last year.
All of them last year.
So, we did all that, we had a maintenance shed we put up. So we did all that, we had a maintenance shed we put up.
New restrooms.
Restrooms. So that was done four to five years ago. We have another organization that's doing the indoor batting facility, which is going up, up on the Field Four, so they're making progress on that. And this is what we call the phase three at J.J. And we're working the newspaper to write an article more telling the history of the, of those projects and kind of let the community kind of know what's all going on. You know, we did a nice art, he's done a nice article with the fairgrounds, right? Kind of showcasing what's all going on within our community. So we're looking to kind of do that a little bit and we'll be having a lot more material that will come out in the very near future to, for help those who may want to make donation for us, we appreciate it. The other piece we're looking into is part of our bid for this, our bid is our quote for the op, it has the equipment to stream games. It's done through the Musco server, through the Musco domain, so it doesn't, we're not relying on someone down there filming and we don't mean to take away business from Farmers Mutual or HMU who's trying to stream our games. But this technology, you go through the Musco server, it's a $20 per year subscription to any Musco, wherever they got the product, you can watch whatever. So what this allows us to do, you have two cameras, you have one in the center field that watches while the kids are pitching. And then once the ball's put in play, it hears that contact, it switches to home plate camera and it gives you a whole field view. And if anybody really wants to look at that, you can go to musco.com and kind of look at their videos they have out there. So we think that's another way of, and I believe we get like 25% of that $20 per fee back, the revenue back towards, probably going to be the city because it's city facility, right, or the Harland Little League. But we can do advertising on there if we want to. But we really love the benefit, we host tournaments, it gives people, anybody to watch their kids play anywhere. If you have a kid in high school softball, baseball, you can watch one stream right there and we can do all of that at once. So that's something we kind of look forward to doing.
How do you spell Musco?
M-U-S-C-O.
Okay.
I did note that.
Thank you.
So that's our kind of plug and appreciation. If anybody got any question, I won't try to bore you or keep you longer, but we'll, obviously we'll be reaching out to a lot of people to help us share the word and you'll see some more things coming out in the very near future as we finalize our marketing material to help share. Okay, so what part of this whole conversation we had was who's our financial arm to do the fundraising? Okay, so everybody's going to know real quick, the lights are city property, J.J. Park is the city property. So in order to ease the burden on the city of doing all the financial tracking, budgeting purposes, bidding and all that, we're going through, Harland Little League is offered up, that's why we're using the Little League board authorized us to use the Little League as our fundraising arm to fund. And when the money is raised, the Little League will buy the components and donate it back to the city of Harland when the time is right. So we're kind of using the Harland Little League, you're going to see that, that's our, that's the name we're fundraising under, or entity we're fundraising for.
So the donations should be directed to the Little League.
Yeah, you'll see plenty of that coming.
So when do you hope to start?
Well, we're optimistic. And so optimistic and you got to be realistic, right? So let's, we'll just put arbitrary numbers, we've got the 250,000 match from Monogram, so as soon as we raise 250,000, we have a match, right? So in order to do what we would envision phase one or the three Little League fields, we have to raise about 450,000 separate of the Monogram Loves Kids. So obviously, we're going to be doing a lot of grant writing of that thing, no different than say other projects we're working on. So we're going to be doing a bunch of those coming up to hopefully help, help us get some funding going. A lot of those do require having funds already raised, so that's kind of where we're hoping. And Musk, I mean, we honestly, we'd love to turn all, or turn lights on in September and have a huge tournament for the Little League. Or we could fall off our chair and turn all five fields on at one time. Sometimes you got to be optimistic and realistic and obviously we rely on our generosity within our community to make this project come to fruition. So we have a quote from Musk, it's locked in for another two years, sorry, 2023. So obviously his pricing was predicated on what he projected costs to be for 23. So there are, we want to say there's potential savings out there within what we're trying to say we got to raise. The cost could actually be cheaper, so that's kind of, but we went with what we call the high risk and we had like a 10% overage built into our projection just to be on the safe side that we would be, what we're advertising is what would cost us to install things. And part of the other part, obviously, poles are 60 feet, 75 feet tall. So we'll probably have to be done by a crane that we don't have in this, we couldn't have like a light service, you know? So it's say when the utility companies, their equipment's not big enough to kind of put the poles in. And it does require a deep hole, 30 inches diameter, 13 feet deep?
12.
12? Got an extra foot, correct? Get a little windy around here.
Got a couple extra shovels.
So if anybody wants to really dig some really holes, deep, deep holes, but obviously we're looking for the same thing, type kind of services, if someone's generous enough to donate their time or their company's time. So those things, well obviously, it's kind of limited, obviously it's a pretty, shouldn't say simple installation, but very simple things to do. Requires all-new lighting, so another thing I think we'd want to mention potentially more from school perspective is, think of, we're thinking forward-thinking, we're running all the new electrical, we run plenty of conduit that's blank or empty with feed wire and then we could pretty much, you could probably rewire for speakers or sound, more of a surround sound on the ball dimes instead of maybe blaring out the parents in the grandstands. Alright, so there's I think an opportunity to take into account when we're talking with everybody that that's a potential and make sure we, if we're digging a hole in the ground for electrical, we just all put an extra conduit or two in there and think for the future on what we potentially have down there, so.
A project like this is best in the fall. Now, spring, there's a lot of activity down there. You've got a big hole, you don't want kids falling down in it. So it's, the best would be in the, in the fall. And so it'd really be nice to do something this fall.
I got one more quick plug from the Loves Kids, by the way. This money is completely separate from like our annual grant donations that you see advertised for our annual, 50, actually $60,000 this year give out in our community. So this money is completely separate from that, doesn't take away from that. For all of us that have nonprofits, I'll give you a business plug. If you go to mongramfoods.com, go under the button that says our values, our values, our beliefs, and then you'll see the Loves Kids donation website, Greg, you got it on there? So we're accepting applications for that and proud to say we're giving away $60,000 in our community. And what is a nice benefit, now that we own the Denison community, the Denison facility itself gets their own $60,000. So we're not really technically having to share money no more, but each plant gets their own pocket of money. So that's something that's really going to be, and I really want to drive home the message and get a lot of applications. I want to make it really hard on our team at the plant to divvy up the money, is what I want to say. I want to make it really hard, I'd love to see lots of applications for all the great organizations and the people that participate in those, we want to try to reward them with them. And I give credit, I have a lot of organizations that are very honest, I just want $1,000. So like last year, we awarded everybody that applied. Because our team have looked and said people were like real honest, they didn't want an extra 10 grand, but they said, hell, just take 500 bucks or 1,000, so we were able to spread it out accordingly, so. Well, thanks for letting me plug that, by the way, I appreciate that.
Music posters actually got some last year for new show choir mirrors and ukuleles that the kids use in fourth grade.
Your music club, so it's advertised as a nonprofit technically, but municipalities and school districts, you fall under the actual criteria that meets. The one, we have to warn people about, the one criteria does not is an organization might take the funds and pass it back through, say it's scholarships. That is not, that's unfortunately is not authorized for our funds.
I think too, Troy, aren't you working with Mr. Gill, Orlando Gill with the Spanish spelling bee? I mean, I know you had offered that.
I believe so, we spoke to him and obviously offered to sponsor and do whatever else we could to kick that off and make it more of a routine thing like that, something we can do in the community. So all those little things.
Helping out with lots of things.
We may not, another thing I'd like to say, we may not write a lot of monetary checks because we don't have a large budgetary locally at the plant, but guys, want bacon for any project or a community event, please call us. That's something we make a five million slice of the dick, so I think we pan out for slices. Some fundraisers, just an FYI, so. So if I'm hungry, I should ask for two days' worth. Maybe.
Our next meeting is the 16th.
Yeah, send that reminder.
Do some of our facilities work, fall under this umbrella where you talked about the entry with the awards and that type of thing? Is there any potential there?
I think there's, there's potential probably to apply for the grant, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, obviously the backbone is how we, you know, how's it impact kids, obviously is what, you know? So any type of kids' activity, whether it's like youth activity, maybe for people with disability, youth disabilities. The library, you know, that was one of our big winners the other day, two years ago I believe, where we did that for the youth reading, that little barn they built, that type of thing. So you see that, the booster, I mean Booster Club at the Music Club was a large winner last year. So those are kinds of events. Obviously, we have the Little League itself as an entity, nonprofit applies for the grant. And I told them maybe this year we won't apply for it because we've got nice 250 grand for another project maybe, but I can't stop them from doing it. So we try, we want to communicate that and share, but yeah, any type of thing that really involves kids' activities, that's the bread and butter, that's what it's designed for, and that's what we want to try to showcase.
It's awful. Thank you.
One of those partnerships, thank you.
Okay, well, I agree, we all greatly appreciate your time, but we'll make Shayla talk next time, shouldn't we? Thank you.
Thank you.
That's very educational.
How about the playgrounds? That's pretty. That was the first thing stated. Okay, at this time, we'll move on to e-action items, and the first item here is personnel report.
Call me to talk to that?
Yes, please.
Alright, so we have, you just have to, there you go. I've had a few resignations since last month. A lot of them for, are for the end of the school year, so. Let's see, that we've got a kid, well, Michelle, kindergarten teacher, fourth grade teacher, elementary teacher associate, Landon's the high school vocal teacher, special ed in the high school, bus driver, and a baker. We.
Are any of them moving, are they, like are we going to different areas?
Mm-hmm, Landon's going.
No, I don't mean out of the district, I mean just taking other jobs.
No, they wouldn't, we wouldn't put them as a resignation, we put them somewhere down.
Gotcha.
At the bottom, just to say, you know, they're transferring to a different position with them. We've hired five new people, so we're, we're moving along. You can see there, we've hired a new substitute in the kitchen. And then here are openings for next year or current year as well. So we're always hiring for special education teacher associates and cooks, but we have some coaches and citizen sponsors and just classified. Does everyone know what classified means? Classified means that they don't have a certificate from the state. So like a teacher is a certified position because they have a certificate, whereas like a cook, it doesn't need that certification. So that's, that's what classified means. And then our certified vacancies for next year, we have the, we're still looking for high school art, but we're kind of creatively thinking of ways that maybe we can fill that internally. We have a STEM teacher, we have a special education teacher in the high school, and we have middle school, high school vocal. So just those four right now. We did receive a STEM applicant this, this week, so that's, we need to look into that. And we have an interview, we're setting up interviews for the high school vocal position this week too. But we're still, we're having a hard time with the STEM and also with the CED and art, so we might have to get creative. We'll continue, we'll continue to look. Anybody have any questions? Okay.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve the personnel report? Someone? Seconded by Al and seconded, or excuse me, the other way around, so moved by Greg and seconded by Al. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, nay. Okay, second item is approval of the 22-23 school calendar. And I suspect under the hearing, we probably should have just approved the presentation of it. So we probably need to do it again here as far as making the motion and making it official that we approve it. I don't know if you want to read that for us, Catherine? Is it back too far?
It's right here. I did, I, let me go back and tell you what I wrote.
Basically, I think it's to approve the 2023 school calendar.
With the exception of the professional development, early, early out versus.
Late start.
Late start. So we'll put that in there.
And who, who had made the motion last night?
Al did.
I made the motion.
Okay, Al made the motion, would you like to make that motion?
I'll make that motion again.
The second was Greg again.
Thank you so much.
So I think we're official now, and all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Okay, next we have the reconsideration of early retirement deadline. And so it's a good time to make a discussion of the early retirement deadline. If you want to say something first?
In the past, it's always been in December, and the two reasons we do that is just to budget and to be able to look for sort of replacements when we're looking for teachers. So it gives us plenty of time to do that. So this year, we, and what Brian does is looks at our total budget that's in the management system that we have available, and then we decide what each package would cost, which that's, that comes to the board. You guys decide that in the poll, and then whatever that chunk of money is, we divide by that amount and see how. So this year, we, we have five available and we have four people fulfill the requirement by the deadline. This would be to consider one after the deadline.
So is this discussion to, is this a specific one or just in general that we're going to extend the deadline?
Yeah, specifically, our policy, I think, has been to consider it and make decisions on a certain timeline. And as, as we're read to it, I think that's probably very correct, is that the board can change its policy, yet the policy has pretty well been set. And we, you'd have to decide you want to change the policy if you want to. And what that means is in the future as far as exemptions. So that's, that's what's for discussion.
So we would have to change the whole policy in order to, instead of just approving one?
I don't think there'd be any change to the policy because the policy already has the part in it that says that we can, we can look at an individual case. Yes. Outside of those parameters, we can look at it individually. I think what I'd be looking for from a board standpoint is I'd be interested in what's the administration recommendation and the one that was before us. That's, I think that was Joni's question, are we dealing with the one that's before us as opposed to the general policy? I think we're looking at the one before us, right? So and that's, I'd be interested, I mean, as a board member, I'd like to have a period of recommendation from an administration on that.
It does, I don't know, historically, there's a reason that we set the exact, the date and the amount and the time. So I'm not sure, I mean, some of you that have been on the board before, I don't know. I mean, I've also, I've been told that sometimes there's people waiting in line and you have to just make sure you only get the first four or the first five. If you approve it, then does that set precedence? I know it says the policy, it does, it says not to, which is what Michelle read. So I, I think it's just, it's up to you how you want to do it. I just, we do have to be cognizant that if this would happen again next year, would you consider that again? I mean.
Or who does it say couldn't happen again this year?
And it could happen again this year, right. And, and what if someone, you're right, right? What if someone thought about this and thought, no, I can't do it because I'm past the deadline? But then it come to us in January. but didn't come to us in January?
Sure, we, Brian was there, um, do you know the history, how often do we fill the quantity that we put out?
I don't know the statistics on that.
Does it usually?
I don't think the last, I mean, there, there used to be, when we first started it, there was lines, but I don't think the last couple of years that it's been, we've denied or turned anybody down.
No, I don't think so either, and I think if I remember right, it's based every, based on each individual year, it's just because we did it this year, doesn't mean we're going to do it.
Correct.
Right, yeah. That was my question, so we're not changing it for every year, right now, we're taking this one scenario.
Yes.
To Joey's, Joe's point also, I think a lot of times, it's a Brian financial decision, isn't as much as anything. Yes, yeah, that's why we want it year by year.
Right.
But that's correct.
And he tells us. So one thing would happen, if someone, if, if, let's say we approved this one, and someone came forward, again, we would have filled the five.
Right.
So there was someone to choose from, so, so that's.
This year.
We also have to consider the part of the, if I'm understanding it correctly, part of the, the whole thought process, process behind this is we do it early so that we can consider that in our budgeting process, and we've already passed the budget, right, so, and now we're into April, which we're, I, I don't, that's something to consider, I mean, it seems like the, the primary, one of the big reasons is so that we know where we are with the budget, that's something that is, this late date is kind of late, but it's a tough decision.
Is it something we need to table and, and discuss with Brian and just see where he's at with the budget?
I think they've already spent the money.
I sure like that Brian's input.
I think it is, maybe they've already. Since the budget, I mean, that's a good point.
My assumption would be still be sitting in the budget since we haven't spent that, but I, that's assuming, and I don't want to, yeah.
And I, and it might be.
We knew that it wasn't going to be used because it wasn't.
Yeah, so, yeah, it's very, that's plausible.
I mean, it's a small budget, on a $24 million budget, it's a bit, it's a small budget, but still, it's, I'd sure like to have Brian's input on that, unless we already feel like we're not interested, then I think it would be good to deal with, maybe next, maybe would we need a motion to deal with?
I think a motion just to maybe have further discussion with Brian and then bring that back to the next agenda, the next board meeting agenda, is that okay?
What she said.
She said, table and talk.
Joe makes the motion.
I'll second that.
Monty with the second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, very good. Next of all, we have item four, E, E four, I don't, yes, E four, classified director and administrative salary proposal. February 4th, the committee met, and Al wants to speak to it first.
We met on, on April 4th.
I just say February.
What did I say?
February.
Among the main points is a, the 3% package increase would also go to the administrators, directors, and 12-month staff, which is something that was not included in the, in the classified staff part, but then I think there are other, some other interesting parts of this that I'd like to have, maybe Dr. Barnett talk to us about, on some of the specifics of this.
Sure, this is exactly what we sent out earlier, so there are some just inconsistencies in the director and administrative benefits packages, so some directors have one thing and some directors don't have this, so we, we just want to make sure every director has the same amount of vacation days and the same amount, just because we ran an opportunity now, Jared's going to be a director, so we kind of have an opportunity to just make sure it's, it's just even across the board monetarily, it doesn't really affect much, but just little things, just so they're all equal, equitable. We would, the biggest thing on this that I feel is most important is that we want to raise the starting wage for paras and the nutrition workers to $15 an hour, and right now, I think the paras start at $12.75 an hour, so what we would do is take that 226, if that's right, 226, and add that to every single para's hourly wage. Brian has done the math for this, we, we've worked with them, we've talked to them, we've looked at, it's very hard to find paras right now, so this would help us recruit, it would also help us retain them, and we are looking closely at how many paras we truly, really need, the principals have done a really good job, if a para does leave, are we able to look at what their duties are and how we could combine some things, so it's not a huge cost, I mean, it's going to cost us a little bit more in the budget, but nothing, I mean, we're, through attrition and not being able to find some paras, we are down the number of paras total right now anyway. And then what happens in the nutrition side of things is if we hire someone in the kitchen, oftentimes they hear, well, there's a para job open and I can make more because it starts out at more, so we're trying to make it equal, and then we lose people in the kitchen, and it's just kind of a vicious cycle, so we hope that we can, we could get your support on that, $15 an hour. As we talked about earlier, Jared's going to move to. Jared's going to move to the transportation coordinator, from coordinator to director, and we would propose an increase of $10,000 to his wages because we are going to be operationally sharing with AHSTW, which means we will get money from them for his services, plus we get operational sharing dollars on top of that, so we, we will come out ahead on that end. Nutrition Services Director, that position, we've split into three or four actually different pieces, so the Wellness Coordinator was on that, and High Top is going to take that over and be the Wellness Coordinator, so we've added some days to her contract in order to do that. The Nutrition, Catherine is going to be the new Nutrition Services Director, you have to have certain certifications to, to do that, and so Catherine's going to have to take some training this summer, and, and will be listed as our Nutrition Services Director. So there's some stipend there for her, I guess I missed, the Nutrition Services Supervisor would be the person who kind of is supervising the day-to-day, and that's a job that's, that is posted currently right now. And then we do, we did, we are going to work with a consultant who has been here before and can help us on the backside with all of the federal paperwork and just the pieces that we need, so she's agreed to do that for one to two years, we just meet with her about once a month, once or twice a month, just to make sure that we have all our i's dotted and t's crossed until we can figure out the process. There's a lot of things behind the scenes in nutrition, our kitchens run really well, we have really good kitchen managers, so that's, everybody has stepped up at this point right now and helped quite a bit. So that being said, that total amount there is very similar to the current amount that we are paying our nutrition, so we just split it up. Brian, last year, was given the title of Facility and Operation Director and was not compensated for that, and he has done a great deal with Esser, with, with HBAC and, and hiring Mike and doing a lot of things, and they're working together on, so I would propose that we compensate him because he's also the school business manager, so he has to, and I also did a compensation study with other school business officials, and he's on the lower end, and most of them do not also have the title of Facility and Operations, so this additional bump to his salary would be paid through Esser funding, which is the extra, the additional funding there, so that would not be an additional cost to us. And we have one technician in the Technology Department, there's only three total, so we have a Technology Director, and then we have two technicians, and there's a, there's a significant difference between their two salaries, and so we would just like to move them, the one a little bit closer to the other end, we also did a salary study on that, and he's on the very, very low end of, of things, so that would increase his rate, and we have that in the Technology budget. And then additional funding to us, that this, we are still in conversations with two or three different districts about sharing the Curriculum Specialist position, which would be Steve Silvane, so he would, we'd share him like one day a week with another district, and/or the Special Education Director position, which those would allow us to get operationally sharing dollars in, so we would get those sharing dollars in, plus the district that we share with would pay us, so that would give us money on top, so it's a lot, but.
All good?
I don't know if you have any questions, but the biggest piece is just the $15 an hour for the paras and the nutrition workers because we, they're very important to us, so.
Uh-oh.
A lot of good stuff there, recommendations, comments or questions, look at that?
I'm glad to see that raises on that, mirrors.
Come back. Joni said she was glad to see the raises for paras.
Oh, good. We needed to, very much.
Shall we have a motion to approve the Classified Director and Administrative Salary Proposal?
So moved.
Al is moved.
Second.
Seconded by Greg, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The next action item is five, Approval of Contracts and Agreement. The first one is a partnership agreement between the Shelby County Fair Board and the Harlan Community School District.
I think that's a general one that we've had for years, no, it's not, Jeff?
I have no idea.
It's not attached, so I don't know.
Oh, my goodness.
It was on there. It's on the record here.
We had it here.
Let me just, wake it up. Basically, from what I understand.
Jim has the copy up in here, so.
Oh, I've got copies too.
Boil it down.
Let me just get the link.
Yeah, boil it down for us, yeah.
Uh, summarize. I think it's just to be a partner with the Fair Board, the Iowa State Extension, FFA, and all of us, so that we can all work together, so that, and we have.
It's for several years.
For thirty years.
Is that my?
I know, I don't know what happened.
Yes, is that, is that the FFA one? So it's FFA?
What that is, that is a partnership with 4H and the Extension Office and FFA that is going to be like an equal partnership down there, our FFA projects in the past that went down, been judged, and then went home, this year, moving forward, what this will do is our, our project will be judged, and they'll have a place to exhibit during the, the fair, the fair week, that's what that is, is in the past, it's just kind of been, you know, 4H driven, and now it's going to have FFA, 4H kind of a feel to it.
And lots of different districts, so AHSTW, Boyer Valley, Exhale, EHK, Harlan, Manning, and Spink, Manning, and Troy Center, so I think they're all coming to that Shelby County.
I suspect there's something Brian.
So we pay for this? No, we don't have to pay for it at all.
It's a dream that they do it.
It's a MOU, pretty much.
So it's not, it's not like a 2080 agreement, because there's no money, it's not a government league, it's no.
I think they are asking for. And you're aware of that, they've changed it.
I think they just want to be more inclusive or whatever. Well, I am happy to make a motion for a partnership agreement between the Shelby County Fair Board and the Harlan Community School District.
Thank you, Jade, in a second?
I'll second.
Joe for the second, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, next item is B, Library Services Agreement for 22-23 with the Green Hills Area Education Agency.
This one we've had for a while, every school district in Iowa has to have a licensed librarian on staff, so they're very hard to find, and Sarah Fink is our licensed librarian, and she works with us along with several other different school districts, so she's here when we need her and, and also on a monthly basis, so this is just that agreement that we share with Green Hills.
Questions?
She's equipped by AEA. That's what I thought, so we share with them. We share, yep, so.
So it'd be silly not to continue.
Yeah, no, yeah, she's awesome.
Very good. Okay, Motion to Accept, Approve the Agreement Between Library Services, for Library Services with Green Hills Area Education Agency. So moved by Monty.
Second.
Seconded by Joni, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Action Item 5C, Agreement with Green Hills Area Education Agency for the Management and Operation of Therapeutic Classroom. Tell us about this one.
Sure, so that one, Jeff and I have been working with the Green Hills AEA, they currently have a therapeutic classroom in Manning, and it is for students with pretty severe mental health needs, and so we, we would be the host of that, but it is staffed by Green Hills AEA, so we don't pay any of the salaries, we don't pay any benefits or anything like that, all we supply is the classroom, which we went over the other day, they actually have a grant, they've got a grant of about $35,000 and are going to do some things to the classroom that we aren't going to have to pay for, but Mike's going to help us. And then they, we, in return for that, we, we don't charge rent to them, but in return for that, we would get one free student slot, which is very expensive when you send a student out, so right now, we have a student going to the classroom in Manning, and approximately $205 a day to, for that student to attend, plus transportation costs, so when Jared said we have one going to Manning, someone's driving him to Manning back and forth every day, so that would save us quite a bit of money, and in addition to that, if we had others, we could, we'd still have to pay the tuition daily, but we wouldn't have to pay the transportation costs, plus we would have that room available for kids because, but also within that, we may have kids from other districts, and Green Hills pretty much manages that classroom, so there'll be a total of eight at the very most kids in there, a certified special ed teacher, a certified therapist is assigned to there, a behavior specialist and a para, so we would provide, if needed, some administrative help, if Jeff, I mean, Jeff or Ann or I will, I will go over there, familiar with the program because we started them when I was at the AEA, so I, I feel very comfortable having, they asked us if we would have it here, it's more centralized, and they feel we could support them. Does there have to be a ratio of students, like, does it have to be one of ours, one of somewhere? Nope. So we could, for example, Clorinda has a classroom, and when they started, they had three kids from Clorinda in there, plus two others from other places and another, so no, it just depends on the timing of when you, when you apply to have a student in there, so they may not have, I mean, they may have, start out with four students, and then another one might come in in October, a different one, just depending on, and the goal is, in this program, is to have them there for a short amount of time, so a year or two, help them get some coping skills and figure it out, and then transition back to their district, so.
This is a one-year agreement?
This is just a one-year agreement, yep, and we'll have to sign it each year, so we can, if it's not working out, we can, yeah.
That's a good question.
Yeah?
Thank you.
The other discussion, I noticed it's for grades one to five, huh, Jim?
Yeah.
Okay, how about a motion to approve the Agreement with Green Hills Area Education Agency for the Management and Operations of the Therapeutic Classroom? Jade is so moved in the second? Joe, first card, has the second on that, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Next action item is 5D, Masters Social Worker Agreement with Green Hills Area Education Agency.
This is another one that we have had this year, so we have, we are operationally sharing a social worker, which is another, so we get money from. a social worker, which is another, so we get money from, to operationally share, and then we pay the AEA for her, for her salary and benefits. So Chelsea Hatcher is here one day a week, and so she works with kids who, I mean, we also have a cooperation agreement with MRTU, and that's paid through parents' insurance. Chelsea can see kids absolutely free of charge and can help do therapy on that way. The other bonus about this is Chelsea would be the person assigned to the therapeutic classroom too, so we would get her part of, another day for, for free. So that's a bonus. Yes. So we operationally share, so we do get this kind of a wash really for what we pay for her. We get it for free.
Discussion, sounds like a good deal, huh?
That was a good explanation, thanks.
Okay. How about a motion for a master social worker agreement with Green Hills Area Education Agency?
So moved.
Joni so moves?
Second.
And second by, was that Greg? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
And those opposed, nay? Next item is 5F, memorandum of understanding with Family Connections, Inc.
This one is, Family Connections is opening a therapy office in Avoca. They are really good at school therapy and school-based therapy, and have started a lot of school-based, this is their own one, sorry. A lot of school-based therapy in rural areas that maybe don't have, I mean, we do have some access to therapists, but not everybody does, Avoca doesn't. So they have some offices in, I think, Rosary Valley and West Harrison, and just all around. And what they asked is if we would be willing to give them an office space, they would provide therapy as well to kids based on insurance and similar to what MRTU does, but we would have another option. So sometimes when you only have one option of a therapist, it's not always good. So we'd have, actually, we'd have three options, because we'd have Chelsea, we'd have Family Connections, and we'd have MRTU. So they want to start out with just one day a week. This is a cost zero dollars to us, it's just a benefit to families. So we would try it, and then they'll start out with one day, and if their caseload gets big, we'll change the contract to however many days they may need, but it's just no cost to us.
I mentioned spaces, because...
Yeah, well, that's the thing we have to figure out. Yeah, that we can share. Yep, we do that right now, so, yep. Maybe one day. I have worked with this group in many other places, and they're very, very good, very professional, really good with kids and parents.
Any questions?
I said excellent, yeah.
Good, very good. How about a motion for a memorandum of understanding with Family Connections?
So moved.
So moved by Monte, second, second by Al. Thank you very much. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
And those opposed, nay? Action item 5G, professional services agreement with MRTU Medical Center.
This is a mental health, you're wearing a cap.
Therapy, so same thing, just that we've already, and MRTU has two therapists here, five days a week. So we have one house at the elementary, Tara, and she works really well over there with the team, and then we have Rhonda here. So this is just our agreement with them, our annual agreement. This one is only, we had not had a new agreement since like 2018, so I've been working on this for several months. So it has quite a few changes from prior. We do feel it's important that they collaborate with us a little bit more, and we don't need to know about the therapeutic side of things, but we do need to know if it's working with the kids and helping the school side of things, because when you're taking them out of a specific class, it needs to be definitely worth that time. So those are just kind of the things, we just ask for some reciprocation and communication from them. So this just goes actually till July, and we may do another one just annually, because the last one seemed to be a rolling contract, and I feel like we should just do it annually.
So are you saying some of the language has been changed from previous on this contract?
It has, yep. And it's spent to our lawyers, so, yeah.
Comments? And could we have a motion to approve the professional services agreement with MRTU Medical Center?
So moved.
Got all this moved?
Second.
Greg for the second? Catherine's keeping up? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
And those opposed, nay?
Thanks, Jenny.
Now we get to talk about something more interesting, ovens! Middle school oven bid!
So this was sent out, Ellen, Ellen has sent this out. Brian has assured us that there's plenty of money right now in the nutrition fund, and the middle school does need some new ovens. These are similar to what we have in other, other of our kitchens, so that's about all I can tell you, Jim. I'm not, I don't cook much at home, so...
And is this something that Mike has been negotiating, or...
Mike has been helping, I think he'll be helping on the end as if things need to get fixed, either Helen, but Ellen sent out the initial first bid. And we did try to get three bids, and we couldn't get, we get one. So we're going to be forward with this one.
Sure. And the total on this?
Twenty-six thousand seven hundred thirty-four.
So first part of it here is the comb, comb heat oven gas. The second part is the heated holding cabinet, is that right?
Yes, so that is after you cook it, and then you keep them in there to warm them.
Trade-in.
Yep. Yes, we have a trade-in.
Possibly a dumb question, is like all the gas lines and electric able to accommodate you, or will there be additional cost trying to update that?
I'm not an electrician or a car in there, but I would think that the, that the wiring would be sufficient for accepting the new one.
Yeah.
And it would be in the same proximity in terms of where the old one was, so there wouldn't be any relocation. Now, I can't tell you the exact, there's probably going to be some fittings that are different in the gas line, some coupler or something that needs to get done, but that's going to be a minimal cost.
As long as we didn't buy a gas oven for an electric oven, there's no issue with it.
Oh, okay. Well, how old are the other ones, probably?
Something twenty-two years.
Yeah. I think it was a good question.
We'll score it for you.
I'm good with it.
I think one of those at least also was an oven that was brought over from New Park, when New Park shut down, I think, then one of those got brought over. I don't quote me on that, but I think that was part of the case too with one of them.
We have newer ovens at Elvin, you have, like, are they...
We just got those.
Yeah, they're the same ones, yeah, that's what I thought, yep.
And they all fit, it was all part of the installation. I mean, the company came out and installed them later on.
Same, from the same company, or from the same...
I can't say I haven't seen this bid, but if they're the same ones we just got, they just...
Well, I bet it is, because if they couldn't even get three bids, if there was only one bid, they must have been...
And our cooks love them.
Yep.
It's Wilson Restaurant Supply, see your files.
We're going to love our ovens.
Kids love them too, because they have customizable alarms.
Oh, yeah.
We'd get a discount if we just picked up ourselves as well.
I like the way you think.
Any more questions? How about a motion to approve the quote from, for the middle school oven?
So moved.
And second?
Second.
Okay, we've got a second for Monte, Catherine. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
And those opposed, nay? Okay, now we're into action item six, policy review schedule, second reading. I believe Jade and Greg and Joe were on the tab to flip those over.
Exciting reading.
There's no changes to what we discussed.
Comments or discussion on the policy review schedule, air two ten point oh eight?
That's the second reading, Joe.
I believe it's through three oh one point oh one. Okay, shall I have a motion to approve the policy review schedule, second reading?
Thank you guys for doing it, by the way. Some, some move.
You'll have your turn.
Already, I've been there, done that.
Over the last couple of years.
I'll second it.
Jade is seconded. All those in...
Was it Greg?
Nope.
Monte, sorry about that.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
And those opposed, nay? Okay, now we are to the policy review schedule, first reading.
My only question on that is, is it not the same format anymore, where we can't ask questions inside of the actual application? So did, have you been in there in the last couple of days? Yeah. So I changed it once you told me about it. You should be able to now. I was just in there and still didn't. Not that I always have a lot to say, but it's helpful if I want to ask you a question. If you highlight the text, does it come up as commenter? All it does is pull it straight from the school website. We've been in the prior one, and it's... Are you in this, or are you in three, in the three-year policy review?
In the three-year policy review, it takes us to the same place.
They both did. It should be... Just something to look at. I didn't know you weren't interested anymore in hearing my question. Nope.
They were not good questions. I missed the van for the question.
If you go in, it's just a doc. No. Are you in three-year right now? You, I mean, you can look at mine afterwards, we don't have to take time for it, but... It should be, it should be so that you can highlight and then put in a comment. Okay. It's not, but we can, you can look at it, maybe I'm correct. Yes, I would like to. Besides that, I thought they were bliss. No, I have no questions. For a second reading?
This is for the first reading.
I did one, just a minor one.
It's three oh three, one oh nine, Joe?
Actually, I was three oh three point oh eight. I just, second paragraph, first sentence in the abs...
I got it up here, Joe.
Oh, it's up there on the big screen?
I think it's second paragraph. Whoa, I'm in the wrong spot, I'm sorry. Three oh three point oh six. I need to go back and find it, Joe. Do you have that up there? Just the second paragraph, superintendent is responsible, eh, maybe I'm in the wrong one?
For designing an administrator evaluation instrument?
No, I'm in the wrong spot.
Are you, you're thinking about the next one down, the superintendent evaluation instrument? Is that what you were thinking about?
Well, yeah, that was also, but it was some minor stuff, but I'll get back to it before the, I'll do it outside the room, because I don't have the stuff in front of me.
Okay. Yeah, because I've been in the question right now.
Would somebody like to make a motion then to approve the policy review schedule, first reading three oh two to three oh three point oh nine?
So moved.
Second. Did Joe move, and Greg seconded?
Joe moved?
Or did you murmur? I did murmur.
Oh, sure.
He murmured. I saw the murmur.
I thought he moved.
I thought he moved his arm, so this is like an auction, Joe.
So moved.
Okay, very good. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
And those against, nay? Next item is...
I don't either.
Eight. What's happening? Oh, I'm sorry.
You better vote on that.
Better vote again.
Let's vote again.
Yeah, just, well, Joe had to...
Well, do you want to...
Did you find something, Joe?
No.
No, we'll, we'll do it later, it's just some wording, nothing to do.
Oh, so we can change it and...
Are we ready to vote?
We're ready.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
And those opposed, nay? Thank you for doing, keeping me on track. Greg, I need some guidance.
Go to Al.
Okay, the next item is eight, consent agenda. So here we have item A and item B to discuss, and bring up if anybody has any questions or comments. Oh, no, I'm going to back up. First, we do the minutes here, which is 8A.
I think you can do the consent.
Oh, we can do all A, D, and C. Okay, thank you. So we have A, B, and C. First are the minutes, accounts payable, and then the financial reports.
So I was on the committee, looked at the reports, the financial reports, and I didn't have any thing that jumped off to me.
Yeah, I was saying, I didn't see it. I was going to just ask, the fifty-nine thousand was a big one to Kansas City Audiovisual device.
You noticed that, and I was, I wondered, I didn't get...
Audiovisual equipment, maybe?
Is it this?
Oh, yes, it is. So we ordered twenty-nine of these interactive boards, and we, we talked about it before, but that was the, and a lot of that came out of building budgets or special education budgets or professional development. So we are the only ones that get to use it right now, because we haven't, we don't have them all set up, but we're getting set up, so teachers will be nice. Basically, those, I think, the, the whole setup was like twenty-two hundred dollars for one, including the, the computer, the giant computer in the stand, and just those alone are about the same, so, and the bulbs are expensive to replace, so...
Because you had this in here a couple...
Yeah, we got to play with it.
A meeting or two ago, seeing here.
We got, yeah, so...
So this is a computer, actually?
Yeah, it's...
Big computer screen.
And it's a whiteboard, and you can put apps on it, it's got a, it's got speakers in there, so if you needed to show something, it really, I mean, you can, it's really, it's pretty cool. And they do have some free training in August that we can go to, so we, once we get our zone rolling, we'll send the teachers to that, and then come back.
So those can be moved in and out of any classroom that requests one for a particular date?
I did play with this before the meeting a while back. They're very intuitive, it doesn't take much for a person to get going on it. I figure a kid would have it down to, like, nothing flat, but...
You're on your own.
And you can mirror, like, if kids are, like, if Jade and I, and we can mirror four different computers up there, screens up there, so if we were working on something as a group where you wanted to share out with kids, and it's pretty, there's lots of little things you can do in the classroom that you can do.
And how many did you say?
We bought twenty-nine. Between the three years... Well, you know, Brian, I mean, we...
That's a good question, Jade.
You have to have it in your budget, so, I mean...
You want to keep it under sixty thousand, because of that, not your...
Oh, yeah, no, yeah. But I think the thought is, once teachers get, working on these, that hopefully they'll send, we'll get, we got a really good deal, because they got a big bulk order through several different school districts, so maybe we can do that again.
Very nice.
Ask people to budget. Well, I can imagine that Brian wouldn't budget that.
What brand are they?
Clear Touch.
Clear Touch, okay.
The other thing that we can use them for, I don't know, like, Davis could use three or four of them at a wrestling match, and you can put different, you can, you can do all kinds of things. Put your brackets on there.
Coaches can use them in the, in the...
In the locker rooms, coaches can use them as a whiteboard. The girls locker room, there's no big whiteboard.
You can actually use markers on their screen?
Yeah, there's a, yeah.
I think I put a grid right up there.
Yes.
Now, don't use a permanent one.
Oh, so...
It's like, right here on the Weather Channel.
Oops, pen.
Yeah. And you can also download it, so like you could draw whatever your notes are on there, download it and send it to kids, so they would have exactly what you...
How do we erase it?
And you can change it to colors.
Yep.
There's also different, like templates, so you put a Venn diagram on there and draw on it.
Technology screen.
Any other comments or questions on the consent agenda? Could we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Can we have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
So moved.
Al has so moved, and the second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
And those opposed? We are to item number nine, Closed Sessions. It has been requested, and it is, actually, it's a state law that we do this superintendent evaluation, and it has been requested, and it is in the law that the superintendent has a right to not have that part of the meeting public, and so we'd like to now go into a closed session. You can, they have a whole paragraph here about this, I don't think it's necessary to read it, but that's basically the gist of it.
Yeah, here.
Do you wanna read that?
We have to read the motion.
Okay?
The motion.
I'm going to, does the board go into closed session to review or discuss records which are required or authorized by state or federal law, be kept confidential, pursuant to Iowa Code, Section 21.51A, and to evaluate the professional competence of an individual whose appointment, hiring, performance, or discharge is being considered when necessary to prevent needless and irreparable injury to the affected individual's reputation, and that individual requests a closed session. All pursuant to Iowa Code 21.51A.
Okay, thank you. Second. Okay, we got Joe made the motion, and we got Al seconded, and so now we go into a closed session.
And there'll be no.
Oh, yes, okay. All those in, excuse me, Joe.
Why, don't you have to say, and there'll be no, vote first?
Vote first, okay. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
And those opposed, nay? Okay, so we'll do our closed session, and then after we have our discussion, then we'll have the superintendent come in, and we can discuss our discussion.